The City of Glendale Common Council is now in session. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full call?
Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmelzling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovic, absent or ex, I have not heard from.
I haven't talked to her today either.
Okay.
I'm also present, so. All right, public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. And if you would, please state your name and address. Should be. Just make sure you talk directly into it.
Earth 6861 North Ironwood Lane, Glendale. Carl put this out on Nextdoor a couple, about a week ago. It's concerning the local construction activities for 2023 and 24. And G. Nick Larray wrote, as we know, it's going to be closed sections at a time. We, in the community down there in Green Tree Valley, are kind of been fighting this battle for a couple of decades. The dropping off of kids at the high school, and I have a feeling that this might make it worse because they can come into Ironwood, drop the kids, go around the block and leave. We now have at least 12 kids in the neighborhood and grandchildren off and on throughout the year. And there's the dog walkers. We're worried that this is going to just blow up. There are two things on the, in the ordinances already to keep, to try and stop this, to curtail it, and none of them have ever really been enforced. They're just given warnings and they're let go. And truthfully, we don't think anything is going to make any difference until tickets are started to be given out. We just don't.
Back forward again.
All right. Oh, sorry. Bill Hego and I have gone back, went back and forth. It's a public street, yada, 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 and I get all that. But there are also state statutes, 118.08, school safety zones. Unless it's marked in yellow, those kids are not supposed to be left off there because if anything happens. So we would like to get this figured out so that these parents are not dropping these kids off or picking them up at 3 o'clock. So.
We can work with River Hills and if need be, Glendale can pay for the sign, but there needs to be a sign at the very entrance off of Green Tree, which is in River Hills that says no Nicolay access. So we can work with River Hills on getting that sign in place. Like I said, if Glendale has to pay for it, but Nicolay or River Hills still has to get permission and they have to put it there, so.
I think talking to Cabrera and trying to get some cooperation from the school, I mean, we bend over backwards.
Sure.
For this school and for the next two years, it's going to be nasty over there. So I don't think it would be hard for him to get this out to the parents of these kids. It, you know, it's not a hard thing to do. It's one little piece of paper out in an email. So that's it.
Also work with the school.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you, Jenny.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in public? Comments?
Sure. Robert Cronwell, 7530 North Applewood Lane. I just wanted to give you an update of the balance for the North Shore Library Capital Fund. This is at the end of January of this year, and they're up to about $210,000. So it's gone up quite a bit, but there's still a long way to go, so.
I spoke with the Bayside Village President today, and you know, in the response was, you haven't heard us coming and asking you for money. And I said, no, he goes, just trust that the fundraising is moving forward. There's a lot of moving pieces. And I said, all right, they haven't come and asked us for money for any capital expenditures. I appreciate the update, but I'm also, you know, it's, they're building the library in their community and there's a whole library committee that is fundraising and you know, I'm not going to micromanage their work as long as they don't come and ask us for money. And at the end, they got the capital from outside sources to pay for the library. That's what I'm most concerned about. So.
Just having some flashbacks to, this is, it's following the exact same course that the high school did with the athletic field update where they hired an initial fundraiser. It fell apart. They didn't raise any money. They hired a second fundraiser. That ended up falling apart. They didn't raise any money and then they ended up going to referendum for it when they promised they wouldn't. And right now we're on our second fundraiser group and they haven't raised the money. There were supposed to be significant pledges made at the end of last year. And based on the numbers that have been published, that they didn't happen or they're just pledges and I, I don't know. There's been no explanation about what's going on. It's.
I have, I have requested an update and so I think the library board is meeting later this week to, to choose a fundraiser. And then we're going to have them come to a future meeting. So I did put in that request today to the Bayside Village President. So.
All right. Thanks.
Yep. Thank. Our Shore Library has a meeting scheduled for this specific purpose tomorrow at 9:00 AM that they posted. So I have it here. I got in an email either. I think it was Friday that they published the notice for the special meeting. I have the agenda right here. I can forward it to you if you'd like.
All right. Anyone else for public comment? If you're joining on the Zoom and you want to speak in public comment, you may now unmute and identify yourself. All right. We've now completed our public comment. We'll move on to our agenda. First item is the consent agenda, which includes the adoption of the minutes and the approval of counts payable. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
I moved.
Move by Alderman Gelhard.
Second.
Second by Alderman Doherty. Without objection. Oh, you want to discuss something?
I just want amendments. I noted that the, the notes from what was it? The minutes from the 23rd, Section 3, it looked like it was some copy and paste errors, but I assume that would be addressed and then I would have no issue moving forward beyond that.
Have you submitted this to staff?
Yeah, I sent it over just today, though. I didn't get to, it's not that much notice.
All right. So you just copy paste there. Okay.
Yep.
So, but the minutes, otherwise you didn't have any.
No, nothing. I would just, it looked like the same section from a different meeting minute was pasted into that one.
Okay.
Just that one section.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Without objection, we'll consider the consent agenda approved. We'll move on. Now we have a presentation regarding the Beer Line Trail improvements, and this is Milwaukee County Department of Transportation. So I know we've had folks from the what is it? The Route to the Badger? Is that the name of the bike group that's been here before us? And I know we've signed on to some letters in support in the past, so. What are you guys trying to up? She has a, share the screen. Yeah, it says the host has it disabled.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Donna Brown Martin. I'm the Director for Milwaukee County Department of Transportation. And I'm here to speak to you about the Beer Line Trail Extension and give you an update on where we are in terms of that process. So I also want to introduce my, my co-mates in this effort. On the screen is Mike Amston from the City of Milwaukee. And Jessica Weinberg is sitting behind me. We're, they're available if you have any questions, you know, that I can't answer as part of this process.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Mike. So. Okay. So the Beer Line Trail Extension, Milwaukee County DOT, in partnership with the City of Milwaukee, secured a CMAC funding grant to extend the Beer Line Trail connecting its north end to neighborhoods, north and west to Glendale and then to the regional trail network as envisioned by Route of the Badger. That trail connection provides safe, comfortable, non-motorized transportation access to jobs, education, entertainment, and other essential services. It also just naturally makes the connection to the under brown, the tunnel that they put in place in, in the area for I-43. The state agreed to put that tunnel in and maintain it. So as the years go by and cracks always happen and, and in bridges and one way or another, they will be responsible for maintaining the bridge structure itself. It also creates off-street trail from Capital Drive Overpass to the Port Washington Road, which I think is going to be really nice in terms of for people in the spring and in the summer to utilize the, the system. Creates new all ages and abilities on-street bikeway connection along Port Washington Road from Capital Drive to Olive Street. And it also creates new off-street trail from Port Washington Road to Green Bay Avenue utilizing West Dot's investment and newly constructed trail underpass under I-43. It connects the existing Bear Line Trail to neighborhoods to the northwest and eventually provides an option for a proposed connection for the 30th Street corridor that has been talked about quite extensively over the last couple of years. The City of Milwaukee DPW would maintain trail extension between Green Bay Avenue and 20th Street Corridor. The importance of this partnership that we tried to create between the state, the county, and the city was so that A, the, the facility could be built, but also to assure the neighborhoods and the community that the maintenance was covered as part of this process. As part of that effort between Milwaukee County Department of Transportation, as well as the City of Milwaukee, we're covering the maintenance for that trail for that purpose. Milwaukee County DOT will compensate Milwaukee County Parks to maintain trail extension between I-43 and Green Bay Avenue. I, my teams are responsible for removing snow, ice, and keeping the interstate salted. Our trucks are a little bit big for that purpose, so we're partnering with Milwaukee County Parks Department to ensure that the trail is cleared. West Dot is responsible for the section of the trail extension under I-43, but would compensate the county to maintain the, the underneath, the, in the, in the tunnel in terms of clearing any snow, making sure any ice, any water, anything like that is taken care of. Trail extension would include a new access road along the west side of I-43 from the trail underpass to Glendale Avenue that would be, be available for the City of Glendale to use if you desire. And that's something to consider. We hope that with this partnership that the county, the city, and the state have put into place that you'll give some, some consideration to how you might want to connect to this, this trail in the future. But at your leisure and at your decision. Okay? That's all that I have in terms of the update, in case you have any questions for me. And here, here's the map. It gives you a pretty of what we're attempting to do with the trail extension, maintenance responsibilities, discussions ongoing between the City of Milwaukee, Milwaukee County. That's, that's clear. We're, we're done with that. We're ready to sign our agreements on that. The trail over to Port Washington Road is marked out for you. Place for done with Home Depot. On the other side, state is the responsibility of Milwaukee County.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'll move into our new business items. Item 5A is review and consideration of no mow May operational policies for 2023. As you know, we, we did no mow May last year. I think there were some things that went well or a few things I think were, I guess we had a little bit of trouble getting some people into compliance in early June. My thought would be if we were to move forward with a no mow May again this year, that we would say by June 1st, all properties must be in compliance. So at some point that last week of May, people need to start mowing. I know I found myself with company coming to visit. I mowed the third weekend, like the very end of the third week in May, so I didn't even make it the whole month. But I did see some properties that, you know, we gave, I think last year we gave to like June 7th or June 10th or something. And there were properties that even in the middle of June still weren't brought into compliance. So Carl, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as part of this initiative we put on there, just as a recommended motion to give people compliance till June 7th, but obviously the city council can amend that if requested. Per direction, we also prepared a list of potential city properties that could participate in no mow May. None of these are real properties that people drive in by major routes would see. They're kind of tucked away. The Director of Public Works, Charlie Imig, and his staff came up with those, which I think would, would complement that.
Include like the properties on Sunny Point that we've acquired that we're currently maintaining and then there's a few other various properties scattered around the city.
That is correct. Yeah, there's a property on Nicolay south of Bender that the city owns. It's a vacant property between two houses, that one as well. And there's a list of other ones around retention ponds.
So when Carl asked me about putting this on the agenda today is mostly just to get some feedback as to what, what folks thinks to, whether or not we put it on a future agenda. We don't have a resolution before us today. We're not voting on anything today. It's just to give information. I'll recognize Alderman Doherty.
I guess last time there was quite a few people that weren't that pleased with the whole idea. I guess I'd rather see us have a public forum and talk about it more.
Okay. Open to that. Alderman Gelhard?
I, I'm not convinced that this program really does help bees, quite frankly. I mean, I, I think it's sort of a symbolic thing, but i- in this part of the country, you know, I, I think it's, it's too early. It's, it's still too cold. Quite frankly, last year I did my own kind of investigation into the water treatment plant at Bender and G. Nicolay. It's all dandelions there and, you know, every time I was down there in May, I never saw any bees out. So I'm not convinced that this is actually a meaningful program to help bees, so.
Thank you. Others? Alderman Schmelzling, go ahead.
I think I got some positive feedback from my neighbors who felt like it was a little more ecological, not just for bees, but for other types of wildlife. It actually made me less self-conscious about my lawn. So I think that might be good for a number of us to, to focus in some regards. Only thing I might, I did get some feedback that people who don't want to participate, they do sometimes get impacted by other people who do. If there are like weeds and such. So I know we have a natural landscaping ordinance that kind of covers a lot of that and those concerns. Maybe it's as simple as adjusting that so that we just let grass grow. And people still have to cut next to properties if people aren't participating, something like that. I think the education part is key as well. I did a little research and there is some data that does suggest it is better. But again, maybe getting some open forums, not a bad idea. But at the same time, I think you know, like any other open firm, just the one person who really has a manicured lawn is going to be very adamant about it, while the larger majority might just say it's fine. So let's try to get some good feedback and maybe I'll do some doors on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? So if, I mean, if we were to want to make a public hearing or public input, we could do that at our next meeting, February 27th. This isn't one of those things that by state statute requires us to give 30 days notice and publish in the paper and everything. This is just listening input, so we can do that over social media and the website and, okay.
I'd give people more time to think about it. Nobody's thinking about cutting the grass right now.
So March 13th?
Yeah, I just mean just look, I want to feel rushed. I'm a bee person, so I'm all in favor of bees. I just don't think that, yeah, I'm not sure this is got all the impact or the negativity it brings.
Okay. Thank you. So March 13th. Not hearing any objection to that, and there was an advocacy for it. So we're just adding it as a public hearing or public forum at the beginning of the meeting. All right. Does that give you enough data for now?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep. And if we do move forward with it, I would not want to see anything beyond June 1st. Like basically we would just waive the, that if we prepare a resolution at some point in the future, I don't want to see anything beyond June 1st. Last year I think we gave like 10 days or something and then we had people that by the end of June still weren't in compliance. So.
That is correct. By the time you visit somebody on the 7th and then you give them 14 or seven days to become compliant, you're getting towards the end of June before.
Yeah. Waive the enforcement till May 31st and as of June 1st, all property should be in. Okay. All right. Next item, review and approval of an intergovernmental agreement and cost sharing of a multi-use trail intersection improvements and crosswalks as part of the state let project at Green Bay Road from Good Hope to Range Line at an estimated cost of $62,200. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the city or the city staff has been working with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation regarding the resurfacing of the street in this area. And then also the inclusion of a multi-use trail with the city's portion at an estimated cost today of $62,200. Basically would provide a trail connection from the intersection of Good Hope and Green Bay all the way up to Range Line Road. So it's a very exciting path at, at a good cost of $62,200 for the city's share. There is some conversations going on about further connections north into Brown Deer Park and to Tetonia. And the city also has planned a sidewalk on, on Green Bay Road, south of Good Hope to Bernard in 2024. So once this path is built, there would be a connection all the way from Silver Spring all the way up to Range Line Road on Green Bay Road. So after transport, a couple times, but it still is a nice connection all the way north and south. So if you have any questions, Charlie and John have been discussing this with, with Stott, so they would be the people to answer any specific questions that you may have about location and things like that.
Any questions? I'll get you, Jim. Jim, you're next. You go ahead, Steve.
Yes, I was just curious. The connector up to, I know it's outside of Glendale, but the connector up to Brown Deer Park, that is that being planned by Brown Deer? Is that one of the things they're potentially doing? Kind of take it up the road a little bit further on the, I guess that'd be the west side.
So the DOT left it up to each municipality based on their adopted plan. So we have a pedestrian bicycle master plan that recommends the multi-use trail up to Range Line. When you get to the stretch between Range Line going up to the Village of Brown Deer, you have the City of Milwaukee and you have the Village of River Hills. Both of them did not want to put any facilities adjacent to the road. So Brown Deer has their sidewalk coming down to their border. We have our multi-use path coming up there. There have been preliminary discussions of connecting from the intersection of Range Line and Green Bay through the park into the trail system of Brown Deer Park and then making another connection to the Village of Brown Deer, which would allow people to kind of go into the park and then come back out. So, but that would probably require different kinds of funding and cooperation with the County Parks Department to make that, those little segments of connectivity.
So the land that's in front of the park on the west side of Green Bay Road leading up to the entrance, that's Brown Deer or Milwaukee? That's Milwaukee. Okay. All right. It just seems like we're so close to getting people into the park. So just was curious if you knew what was happening there. Thank you.
If we worked with Silverado, we could actually get up to the entrance. Because Glendale ends, the Silverado property ends essentially right at the entrance to the park. Right. It has to cross the street then. We'd have to create a crosswalk. We'd have to work with the state on creating a crosswalk there, but.
Yeah. Well, yeah, as part of the, the project that's currently going out, it will start, I think it's already started at Green Bay and Range Line. As you probably all recall, there'll be traffic signals put in with that. And there are some ADA ramps that'll be put in as part of that project. So yeah, it's just a matter of kind of working with other jurisdictions to get that connection to the park. So obviously I think the bottom line is funding, but we're doing our part, so we're getting up as far as we can. But correct, Mayor, it's just a matter of trying to make that next connection. But there are currently, safe or not, I mean, there is, there is a bike lane on the other side of Green Bay and we didn't feel it was safe enough. So that's why John and I pushed forward to have this path independent of Green Bay, Green Bay Avenue. So that's where we're at.
Okay. I had no idea that was a bike lane. I just thought it was a breakdown lane. So.
They call it a bike lane. We do not feel it's safe. I mean, if you travel like I do, Dan, maybe it's just, I would not be on there on my bike, put it that way. But yeah.
All right. That was, that was one quick thing. And the other thing, just further south, I looked at the plans. It's not a multi-use trail the whole way. It turns into a sidewalk. It's kind of odd.
South of Good Hope?
Just north of Good Hope, I believe, on the east side of the road before you get to one of the intersections. I think it's sidewalk. Was there a reason for that?
From Fairline, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a matter of right of way. And I think there was potentially planned a curb there one time for separation from the road itself. And then that'll connect in. So that's another project that's going on this, this year is the Green Bay Good Hope Hissup Projects, Highway Safety Improvement Project. So that'll also put curb ramps and better connection, better turning movements through that intersection, improve signals, all of that. So that connection will be made with the path to that intersection. And then there will also be pedestrian movements through that intersection, which then as Administrator Warwick said, it'll be, we'll come, the city will come back in after that project completes in '24 and place a sidewalk from Good Hope to Bernard on the west side of Green Bay. And that'll complete the pedestrian connection, as Alderman Warwick said, or I'm sorry, Administrator Warwick said, all the way down to.
Okay. So just spacing inside. Okay.
Correct. It's phasing. It's a matter of letting projects complete, city coming back in and, and making connections.
Alderman Doherty?
$62,000 is the original cost. Do we also maintain that? And what would that run us a year?
I don't have an exact figure, Alderman Doherty. It would just be a matter of, at least, at least in the first year is just correct, just snow removal.
And then eventually it would be ours to maintain. If there's divots or any, any obstructions in there, it would be our responsibility to fix that.
Correct. I mean, as far as.
Hopefully that's long.
Any asphalt repairs or cracked ceiling or anything else that would come with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We do have an intergovernmental agreement before us. So can I get a motion to approve, please?
I'm moved.
Move Alderman Bailey.
Second.
Second, Alderman Schmelzling. Any further discussion? All of us in favor of approving the intergovernmental agreement and the cost sharing agreement with the state for the multi-use trail and intersection improvements from good on Green Bay Road from Good Hope to Range Line. Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Here, if I may, just one more quick, quick thing with that. So now that you've approved it, John and I will go back and work with them to pre- prepare an SMFA like we've done with other projects. And that'll come back then in front of you all for that actual agreement. So this just gives, what you did tonight gives us the go ahead to work with them to create the SMFA.
Okay.
Statement as well, finding an agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, item 5C is certified survey map. This was with regards to the City Hall and North Shore Fire Department property. There's a little slight tweaking of the lines there. This already went to the Plan Commission, the Plan. This already went to the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission referred it back to the Common Council for approval. I don't know if anybody has any questions or if you want to add anything to that. All right, can I get a motion then to approve the CSM?
I'll move.
Move Baldeman Gelhard. Can you get a second? Second Baldeman Shaw, any further discussion? All in favor approving the CSM, say aye.
Aye.
No? Cries. Next, item five D is a resolution establishing the written procedures designed to foster public participation regarding an amendment to the comprehensive plan as required under section sixty six. Point one zero zero one of Wisconsin statutes. This actually already came to us and we referred it to the Plan Commission, Plan Commission that last week and is sending it back now. They did unanimously approve the resolution and recommended the Common Council do so as well, so. I don't know if we need any further discussion. It already was before, it was before, so if we're going to make an amendment to the comprehensive plan, there need to be procedures for public input, and this was this, the Plan Commission approved them and sent them back, so. All right, can I get a motion then to adopt the resolution?
I'm moved.
Second, move Baldeman Bailey, second Baldeman Schmelzling, any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries, resolution is adopted. Uh, next is review and approval of a permit fee waiver. Um, this is for the city's portion of the plan review and permit fees for North Shore Fire and Rescue. Good, I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. So every time a permit is issued in the City of Glendale, a forty percent administrative charge is added to that permit, which funds the city's internal costs for issuing permits. The North Shore Fire Rescue will be administering and taking out many plan review and permits for the construction of Station eighty two here in Glendale. Essentially, what we're asking the city council to consider is waiving the forty percent administrative charge for their permits and fees since the City of Glendale and other municipalities in the North Shore will be. Paying for these permits already, so we're just asking for feedback and consideration. On this fee waiver, it had been done for the city hall as well, the forty percent administrative fee was waived for the permit fees for this building that we're sitting in.
And the renovation of the Shorewood and the Whitefish Bay stations, both of those communities also waived the fees, so Alderman Doherty, you had your hand up.
That was my question, I wanted to make sure everybody. You know, let's say it's not been a consistent world.
Yeah, no, they, they did, so. Alderman Schmelzling, go ahead.
And the, the other funds that we have to pay for like Safe Built are, that's still going to be covered by the, the North Shore Fire Rescue.
That is correct. North Shore Fire Rescue will pay the Safe Built. Our, our out of pocket costs will be funded by North Shore Fire Rescue, that is correct.
All right, no other discussion, then can we get a motion then to approve the permit fee waiver for the North Shore Fire Department?
They'll move.
Move Baldeman Gelhard, or second, second Baldeman Doherty. Seeing no other discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Uh, next, item five F, Mr. Cromwell, you wanted to speak to this before we consider it. Robert Cromwell, seventy five thirty North Applewood Lane. Uh, I was excited to see another tweak to the liquor license code section. Then when I read this, I was a little, I don't know, underwhelmed. There's, there's one change, you're adding a number eleven. The exemptions listed in this subsection also apply to class B licenses consistent with state statute. That language changes nothing as far as who's eligible or not eligible under both state law and the, the city code. So whether you have that in there or don't have that in there, it doesn't affect anybody's eligibility for that license. I, I don't understand why we're making the change.
That's a good question. You are correct that it is that way. We've had discussions here internally, and it was asked to bring this before the city council to be transparent. So that the people who are applying for liquor license know it, it applies to class B in big quotes, quotation marks. We understand that the way the state statute is written, that it does apply that way, but it doesn't seem that way the way it reads. So I don't know if Attorney Bear has anything to add on that, but that was the clarification.
Sure, thank you. So here's where the confusion has come in, and this is a question that I've been asked a number of times. They look at the chapter one twenty five of the state statutes and they say, well, wait a minute, the exclusions. Associated with, you know, for example, restaurants and movie theaters and. Bowling alleys are all listed under the class B beer license, but they're not relisted under the class B intoxicating liquor license. Why do they apply to both? And the answer is kind of simple, but it's not necessarily intuitive, and the reason is that in order to get a class B intoxicating liquor license. You first have to be eligible for and have. A class B fermented malt beverage license, basically the beer license. So because you already have a beer license that allows you to operate differently than other establishments. The intoxicating liquor license license is the second one that gets tacked on, so it would essentially be redundant to put it in. The exception under the class B intoxicating liquor license as well as under the beer license. So that's why it's listed that way in the, in the statute under chapter one twenty five, and I get that question all the time. And so the, the thought was, somebody had raised the issue, well, that's not terribly apparent if I read the, if I read, if I read the ordinance. Is there any harm in adding language that? Notes that if you already have the class B intoxicating, you know, the class B beer license. That this also applies to the class B intoxicating liquor license? No, there's, there's, there's no problem adding that. This was requested and we threw it in.
This is my question, thanks. All right, so we have before us then this amendment. Did this go to the Plan Commission? This didn't go to the Plan Commission. It's the next one, the signed one that was the plan, okay. But this, I know has been before us before, we already approved a bunch of changes, and now this is just one more change, so. All right, can we get a motion then to approve the text amendment? Move Baldeman Shaw, sir second.
Second.
Second Baldeman Gelhard, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is the text amendment for regulation of signs, billboards and other advertising medium. This already, actually, Mr. Cromwell wanted to speak to this one, but he is leaving, so. Scratch him off here.
I think he knows I know at the end.
What?
I already answered his question.
Oh, you answered his questions, yep. So this already came before us, we sent this to the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission reviewed it, and now is sending it back. We have approved a number of signs, the digital signs in highway right of ways, you know, like the Bavarian one. And then we've also approved a number of others around the city in planned developments, and this just takes that language and puts it into the B one. So that essentially, they don't have to go through the rezoning and turn everything into a PD in order to get the same signs we've already approved elsewhere. That's really all this comes down to, so I don't know if Mr. Fellows wants to add anything to that, or does that?
Sure, there's just a couple, two little things that changed through our discussions with the Planning Commission. One was to add the S one institutional district. When staff reviewed the S one, we didn't notice any, but there actually is a digital sign on a, a church up on North Port Washington Road, so we wanted to. Try to include that also, and then. With regard.
Nicolay as well.
There is Nicolay, yes, so that would, it would include Nicolay, cause Nicolay is S one, so it includes those, and then a fifty percent for the monument sign, so it had been up, had. When you first saw it, it had said up to forty square feet. For the electronic message board, staff recommended a planning commission, maybe we should change that to fifty percent. The way our ordinance works, it's really based on. The monument signs are based on the size of your property and frontage, so they're kind of scaled to the environment, so if you're on Good Hope Road and you have a very big property.
You'd be allowed to have a hospital, you could basically have something the size of a digital billboard.
You'd be allowed to have a hundred and fifty square foot sign, so forty percent, forty square feet on a hundred and fifty is a very tiny portion. So it's more of a scale type thing, and so that's why we recommended a planning commission that we modify that, and they did recommend to you those two changes. Um, and there are a number of numbering, lettering, random spaces and some indents that. Were brought to our attention, so we would just recommend if you make a motion to make a motion with the. Some.
Cleaning up the number.
Cleaning up of the numbering prior to signing the ordinance.
Okay. Baldeman Shaw, did you want to make a motion?
We're just talking, it's all grammatic actions.
Sure. Um, all right, so we've got a recommendation back from the Plan Commission, so can I get a motion to approve then?
So move.
Move Baldeman Doherty, sir second.
Second.
Second Baldeman Gelhard, any further discussion? Okay, and we'll just consider the grammatical, grammatical changes are not substantive, so, all right, all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Cries. All right, item five H, a multi-year agreement between the City of Glendale and Vilani Land Shapers Lawn and Landscape Maintenance. For landscaping services and an annual cost of a hundred and five thousand three hundred seventy nine dollars and eighty five cents. Charlie.
Again, yes.
Sorry, Director Imig.
Yeah. So the council approved three years ago to have a contract with the, with Sebert Landscaping, and this contract is now up. So it was sent up for requests for proposals. Vilani Land Shapers was the, the lowest bid by, well, the closest was Sebert at about ten thousand dollars more. And which is surprising, I gotta be honest, I, I, I knew that Sebert came in in twenty twenty and sharpened their pencils, but to. To come back, you know, three years later and have a bid lower than that and also include more scope of services was actually kind of nice. There is at least two Glendale residents that I know that work for Vilani Land Shapers. They are located in Menominee Falls, we checked the references, builders in Menominee Falls as well as Concordia University both raved about their services. So we feel that it, it would be good for us to contract with them for three years.
They also passed our qualification process before they bid?
That wasn't part of the process.
Oh, this one wasn't one?
No, this isn't a bid, this is a request for proposal.
Oh, got it, okay.
But this is typical, so we did the last time with Sebert, and again, staff feels based upon our reference checks and, and. Price that was quoted by them, that we feel that it's a good, good, good move forward.
Okay. Alderman Schmelzling, go ahead.
So the, the budgeted amount looks like together was like a hundred and. Ten thousand, and then you, you do the math, and it looks like. The land shapers came in like just at the budgeted amount, so I'm just curious, was this published, this budgeted amount already, and they just kind of?
It's budgeted for in the count annually, so it's just we contract with somebody for that, so that's why that was, this is what we did in twenty twenty, same thing, we broke it out to what it would cost. The city and the, and the general fund.
So, all right, well, they did their homework, it looks like, cause they came right underneath what we had for budgeted amount, so.
Charlie, what type of services will they be performing?
It's, it's anywhere from mowing to, to mulch to landscaped areas, maintenance. The area east of, east of Port Road on Silver Spring, so the Bay Shore area, basically it's just landscaping services.
And typically, we just assign them to do this, and then they do it, or they, it's like billed up to, you know, a hundred thousand dollars per year.
Correct. And it's, and it's a maintenance of the, so the areas that they, they, they mow, that's what currently is, and what is in this contract is also trash collection on a weekly basis, things like that.
Other question?
And I guess just, just to your point, if I may add, I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't interrupt you. What is also included in this contract that was not in last year is the bioswales. That are outside of city hall, there's three of those, those were actually with the contracted as part of the city hall build with a landscape contractor, those were up again last year too, so that's included. As well as some other maintenance of beds that were not previously included, so again.
You still have city staff doing mowing.
We do, we do, no, it's, it's not like we're, we're not doing, no, we still, the city still cuts Good Hope and maintains that. We maintain portions of Port Road and portions of, of Green Bay.
The park and the parks and a number of neighborhoods.
Yep, and all the grease base areas that we're gonna forego in, in May potentially, but yeah, although those areas.
And Gene Nicolay, that road on the side there.
Yes, which I'm happy to say, which you know will be gone as part of the new build, and but, but there will be a median, a median, I'm sorry, a terrace area between the sidewalk when it goes in, and. I believe that'll be on the residence, we talked about that previously, but correct, there are areas throughout the, throughout the community that we staff currently maintain.
Other questions or comments? Okay, can we get a motion then to approve the multi-year agreement with Vilani Land Shapers to conduct landscaping services at an annual cost of a hundred and five thousand three seventy nine and eighty five cents? Move Baldeman Shaw is our second. Second Baldeman Schmelzling, seeing no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I don't think the entire name's gonna fit on a check, but okay.
Actually, it does, I know some.
All right, and the final item of new business is five, I review and approval of an agreement between the City of Glendale and the Glendale Convention Business Association. For marketing and fundraising support services. I'll turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So the city has worked with Welcome to Glendale in the past over these exact services without an agreement in place and compensation for said services. So essentially, this agreement provides Welcome to Glendale or would provide Welcome to Glendale compensation. Equal to ten percent of all the fundraising efforts that they raise for Music in the Glen and Welcome to Glendale. Hopefully provide a great incentive for them to raise even more money than they have in the past. As well as Welcome to Glendale provides specific marketing services for those events as other things throughout the city as well. Um, and in exchange for that, there would be a five thousand dollar amount in compensation in the draft agreement before you guys for consideration.
Last year, we utilized their services and we never quite came to the agreement, so, but we were also moving from. The city administrator to an interim city administrator to a new city administrator, so I appreciate that you've got this before us, before they started into the sponsorships for the summer.
Yeah, thank you, and it's been a pleasure working with Welcome to Glendale. For the city.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, good emotion to approve, well, let's get a motion to approve the agreement. Move Baldeman Shaw is our second.
Second.
Second Baldeman Bailey, go ahead, Alderman Schmelz.
Thank you. So I, I know it's kind of gone back and forth on their roles and responsibilities, so I think it's good that we just have it defined. I also think that if we find that they do a great job, I know we've had great work with them the past few years, and they were even more engaged, at least on the Fourth of July events. Before some of the shifts in staff. There, there might be benefits to have them do other type of planning activities as well, because. They're frankly going to do a better job planning events than potentially some city staff and volunteers. And committees, random people, so just saying that I think this is great, but let's, let's keep in mind that they could potentially even do more, potentially at additional fees.
We've had, we've had those discussions with them about that in the future.
Those are great points, I agree.
Thank you, Alderman Doherty. All right, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. And we'll do commission, committee, board and staff reports. Number one is not here, number two, Alderman Doherty.
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, number three?
Nothing to report tonight.
Number four?
Nothing to report, although I do think a big compliment to Chief Ferguson, as I'm on the Glendale Police Academy. At our first meeting, wonderful, great. From on a. Really appreciated.
Um, Fourth of July, we, we don't really have any meetings, so to say, scheduled, but we are making some progress with city administrator and our. Jessica from our HR department. We have a corn roaster, so we'll be doing that again, and. I think we also are looking at maybe getting bouncy houses from elites because they have them. And they could just run them across the street essentially, and save us potentially some money there. So again, that was a great partnership from our Welcome to Glendale folks saying, hey, we have a member, they have. Bouncy houses, we might be able to just do some in-kind contributions, so slow but steady progress, and. Yeah, that's probably good for now. I'll reach out to the volunteers and give them an update, because I don't think we've really updated any of the ones that are carrying over the few that we have.
Music in the Glen will be meeting this Wednesday at Welcome to Glendale Center, and we're pretty darn close to having our finalized lineup for. The six days, I think we have, and our August ninth, I believe, will be our rain date, so. It was suggested by one of the committee members to advertise at the rain date, so I just hope we don't end up canceling two concerts, because you can't have them both in one night.
All right, thank you. The ICC met this afternoon, light agenda, so I really don't have anything to report. Light agenda, so I really don't have anything to report from the ICC. Um, I've been teaching a class on Mondays and today was the last day of class. So I actually left before the meeting was over. So Carl, did anything else happen after I left?
Nothing dramatic happened after you left.
Okay. Yeah, there was just one presentation and I was there for that. So. All right. Um, so that's my report. I will then go to city attorney.
Hi, thank you.
The administrator?
I have nothing either. Thank you.
All right, and chief? You want to turn your mic on?
Okay, I was just going to piggyback off our Alderman Bailey that uh, we do have spots available in our Citizens Police Academy. Um, I know people can't go to all of them. Um, but if you would look on the website, we should have the classes. And if anyone sees a class that they would like to do, feel free to let us know and drop in and uh, can guarantee a T-shirt, but uh, you can get some interesting stuff. It's every Wednesday night from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thank you.
And um, yeah, I know the, the clerk is, is not with us right now. She's out, but um, the early in, or in-person absentee voting is moving along pretty smoothly, I believe.
Yeah, it's open until February 17th at 5:00 PM.
Okay. All right, so that concludes all of our reports and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, moved by Gelhard, seconded by Bailey. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Stand adjourned.
Take care, everybody.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Get better.
Yeah, I'm working, I'm not getting there, but I'm working on it.